Okay, I think we're good to go. Are we all good?
Yes.
Okay. Let's call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We do not have a quorum because of elections. The planning board will need to appoint some more members next Tuesday. So what we're going to do is we're going to have a discussion meeting. We won't do any motions tonight. But we will talk about and think about our recommendations for the vision survey so I can bring them to the planning board next Tuesday. Okay? So we're going to skip the approval of the minutes, and we'll delay that until the next meeting when we do have a quorum. So Jen, you are up with the survey.
Sure, give me just a moment to bring it up.
Did either of you get a chance to look at it? I asked Jim to forward it to you. I just got it this afternoon.
The updated survey?
Yeah.
I saw the first one that you had sent out.
Right, that was just...
And went over there.
Right, okay. Okay. This one actually isn't that much different in a lot of ways, Jen.
It is fairly similar. There are a couple of nuances to this that I do want to talk to you about. It's not necessarily the questions being asked, it's how...
I'm not getting... Jen, I'm sorry. You're not coming across clearly. Can you get closer or...
I'm at my only mic that I have on my laptop.
Okay.
I don't know if it's on the cable end.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you now, yes.
Okay. So there are a few things with the survey. It is visually very similar to the one you guys had done as a sort of test survey or initial mock-up. There are some subtleties to this one that I do want to discuss with you, and they're fairly easy changes to make, one way or the other. But it's your survey, so you should get to decide it. We do have a few... So right now, the survey is technically live. You guys can go in and take a look at it and provide comments in the next period of time. We can make changes. But I would request that you not send that link out to folks at this point because while we're testing it, I can then, when we officially go to launch, go in and just delete any test results. If you guys want to go in and take the survey, though you're a member of the public taking it. So that's just sort of an advance forward of take it, fiddle with it. I can always go in and delete it. But once we actually launch it, I don't want to be deleting things because that's the entire purpose of the survey, is to get results. So right now, there is a small URL for this that says publicinput.com/newton2021. If you would like me to put that as Newton Master Plan 2021 or some other term, I can. I was just trying to go with as short as possible.
Okay.
For publication purposes.
I like short.
Okay. So once the survey has been launched and then we close it, the results of that survey will forever stay at this website. So anybody in six months, six years, can go to this website and see the results.
Perfect.
So that's something else to be aware of. So it's just got a little blurb at the beginning saying why you're doing the master plan, the state law that guides planning boards, where the current master plan is available, how long the survey will take. I estimate about 15 minutes. Some people will take an hour to do it, and some people will just fly through it. So 15 minutes is about the gauge most people are willing to spend time doing surveys of this type. One thing that we do have as an option is that comments, we can attribute to people. Some of... So we can have the option that people can comment anonymously or that they are required to put their name. Right now, I have it set so that people have a choice. They can put their name if they want. They can do it anonymously if they want. The one thing is that on a few of the more... I'm going to say the more sensitive questions, and some of these are really dealing with personnel at town hall, I have it so that if someone leaves a comment, it will not show publicly. It will be part of the results, but it will not show publicly. Every other comment is a public comment. So as people are taking it, they will be able to see the other comments previous takers have actually submitted. So people can start to get a flavor of what other folks are saying, not just themselves. It kind of helps to build some of the momentum of when people might be leaning one way or the other so they can do something like you can do on Facebook, where they can like a post or agree with it so they're agreeing to someone else's comment or not agreeing without having to rewrite a comment themselves, or they can do both. Does that make sense?
It makes a lot of sense. Hopefully, it'll build in a positive way.
So there...
Yeah.
There is...
I do have a question, Jen.
Sure.
On the ability to make comments and not have your name attributed to it or to have your name on it. If you put your name to be having ongoing contact, does that make your comments automatically be attributed to a name? Or how do you distinguish?
No. So if someone wants to put their name in, they're given a separate access or separate place to enter that. If people want more information about the master planning process, and that is the very last question on this survey.
Right.
That is automatically hidden. So nobody's contact information is published on this, and their names are not published on this from that specific question.
Okay.
If they choose to put their name in with a comment, that would be published.
So for instance, if it said remarks, and I said, "I think this is a great idea, Annie Collier," then my name would be in there. But if I didn't say, "I think this is a great idea," and if I just said, "I think this is a great idea," didn't put a name, then my name wouldn't be on there?
Correct.
Okay.
It would capture the comment. It would not capture your name unless you stated that that was okay.
Okay. Thank you.
The other thing to know, and I... Some folks have liked me to put this in sort of the introduction. That's sort of here. Other folks don't think it's as important. There is, in the algorithm in this survey tool, you can basically flag when someone is using profanity or very, very strong language. And what that does, and that's sort of the default setting, is it will not automatically publish a comment without having the administrator, in this case, that's me, review the comment. So if someone writes, "I hate..." Pick a town employee's name. If they write that, it will not be visible until I actually see it. And I can either keep it a hidden comment or I can say, "Oh, that's not really a terrible comment" because sometimes it flags things incorrectly, and then just make it public. All of the comments, though, are part of the final result.
Okay. So for clarification, you're the administrator of this, and you make those decisions?
I make the decision if it gets flagged of whether it should be published on the website or not. But as far as the final comments, the results you would get, you would see everything.
Okay, thanks.
So I in no way would be doing any editorializing of anybody's comments. The other setting it does have is that when someone is using very strong language, it does alert them saying, "Hey, you're using very strong language" either because it's profanity or of the anger tone to it. You may want to re-choose your words because this will be posted on the public website. So it does try to ask people to provide constructive criticism if that's what the tack they're going.
All right, great.
It doesn't usually raise too many comments, but there are the occasional one when you're having a big community survey. So most of the questions, which are things like, "What do you like most about living in Newton?" In this case, it is select your top three. This is the only one where you're only selecting a handful of questions. You are allowed to elaborate more in comments. This is something that we'll then be able to attribute to people's other answers and other questions. But it does allow you to also add an image if folks have a place that they really love in Newton or there's something that makes them really passionate about living in Newton. They can upload a photo to because a lot of people will probably end up taking this on their cellphone. It's a nice little tool to have. So we may get some good photos out of it as well.
Okay, Jen, on that first one, it seems like you don't have something in there about near family.
I certainly can add it. That's easy.
What?
I can certainly add that if that's a...
I think it should be because I think...
Sure.
I think that that's true for some people in town who've moved, either moved here because their family's already here or whatever. Give me just a moment.
So that's been added.
Okay, great. I did... I'm just sharing. I have some comments that came in from one of the new board members who had sent them in after you got this. So, you know, this just came in later this week. One comment was removing "most" from question number one. And he thought that that might limit people responding openly to each option. Your comments on that?
Honestly, I don't think it's a big issue either way.
I don't either. It'll come up. I mean, you know, the planning board will make the decisions on these things. But proximity to city... I can't read too much. Do you have proximity to cities and urban areas there?
It says near main highways, near medical services, near employer.
Okay. Okay. There were three suggestions on here, just your thoughts.
Yeah.
Folks, you know. Local outdoor activities, availability of housing stock, property tax rate were three things that were suggested in there. I think those get covered personally in some of the other questions. But what are your thoughts on those, Jen?
So I, just from having done this question and a couple, or versions of this question and some other master plans, this tends to cover the big ones. That's one of the reasons for having that comment section, is that people will write other things, and they might, will probably elaborate on some of these.
Yep.
But if there's something like, "Oh, well, this is... I commute to Boston, so it's really good that I can have below taxes but still be able to commute to Boston." It's hard to capture the nuance of that in a multiple choice. That's really the benefit of having a lot of comment sections, is people can elaborate on what they really mean by it.
I think affordability also covers the tax rate and the availability of housing. I mean, it's kind of supply and demand. By the way...
It does cover a range.
By the way, I want to say one thing that I really liked your comment that you had in the email that you sent, that these will kind of shift as people open up the survey. So they won't go in a certain order. So it'll be randomized as far as which ones they see first.
There is only one where that is not the case, and that is just in the town services because it goes from sort of the higher level town services, like Town Administrator Select Board, down to more of the department sections, just to keep those somewhat together. That's the only one that doesn't randomize.
Okay, great.
But the rest all do.
Okay.
So moving down to what is really the second question about how important is each of the following features to Newton? These are largely what you had sent me in your original draft. The ones that I will point out are changes, or not changes, really additions, are these, which are really dealing with the... What uses are allowed in what zoning districts in Newton? Because this is the question that has come up a lot with the planning board, with applications, with zoning ordinances about what uses should be allowed where and how close should they be allowed to occur to each other. Now, I know that some of the questions you had originally sent to me did deal with really specific questions of should setbacks be changed? Should they be 25 feet or 50 feet or 100 feet or 200 feet? How should they change? Those are very, very specific questions, and this is a broad-based survey. The subtlety of that will get lost on most takers. But keeping it as a very big question of should we have... Should you only allow commercial industrial in your commercial industrial zone? Or should you have more mixed use? Should there be more separation or less separation of those uses? Helps you to get to that answer of should you reduce setbacks? Should you increase them? Maybe how you should modify them? It gives you a direction to be going without giving a specific number or asking residents to give you the specific number at this point. I don't think you're there yet. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense.
And people can also comment further about any of these items. But those were the specific things that I did change.
Jen, could you read those just because it's difficult for those of us sitting here to see it?
So one of them, and these are all ranged from... So how important is each of these features to Newton's character? So not important, important, very important, no opinion. So the first one I added is keep mixed-use developments, which residential, mixed with smaller, commercial or residential uses, within their currently allowed zones. In Newton, that's primarily your village district that that is allowed. So should people keep the mixed-use development where it currently is allowed? How important is that? The next one is keep commercial and industrial development within the currently allowed zones. So basically, should you not change anything?
Right.
The next one is should you increase the separation between industrial/commercial uses and residential uses? And separation can be a whole lot of things. We're not asking them to figure out what that should be, but should they be separated more? The other is decrease the separation requirements between industrial and commercial uses and residential uses. I will say, because this is going to change in order a lot, asking it two different ways will help to verify the result of that. So if somebody says it's very important to increase the separation between all of those uses, and then they say it's not important to decrease the separation, well, then maybe the question was confusing or maybe they're not quite sure what they want. It's a way of... Or if they say, you know, the same thing, they're verifying that, yes, they do think it should go one way or the other.
Okay. I have one of the things... Whoops. I just knocked my mic off, sorry. One of the things that I wonder... Okay, let me just discuss one of my pet peeves is developers come in and just clear-cut everything, and we lose all our trees and coverage and stuff like that. And, you know, I'd love to see more natural barriers between lots and in front of lots. Would that kind of a thing, would that kind of a question help that? Or is there something in here which basically addresses wanting to keep more of the woodlands or something? Is there something in there?
So having open, having forested areas, having open spaces. You do have old stone walls. I could add something in here about maintaining scenic roads. I mean, you do have actually some scenic roads if you would like to add something into that mix.
I just, you know, do you want to think about that? Or can you think... Or do you think... I'm not clear. Do you think that it's covered?
I think that we, I think we could add maintaining tree-lined streets and scenic roads.
Yes, I like that.
Okay.
Hey, that'll work.
Sorry, it'll take a minute for it to refresh.
No, you're fine.
So now that's in there for this last one.
Pat, jump in anytime. I talk a lot.
And again, this does have the feature for where people can comment.
Right.
So moving on to this next question. This is something I added in because I think there has been a lot of discussion with the planning board over the last couple of years about where is Newton going? And this is really going to speak to when you start working on your vision. So what do you think of Newton in five or... Or when you think of Newton in five, 10, or 20 years? What would you like to see? It's a very broad question.
Very.
But I think that you will get some really good insight from it. And some people might say, "I don't care," or "I'm never going to live here," or give you a paragraph of what they would like. But it seems like a broad enough question that it was worth asking. Some people might not respond to it. And absolutely none of these questions are required questions. But if anybody answers any single part of it, we will capture it. They can answer the first question and the last question and nothing else. They can, they can go halfway through the survey and, you know, they get called off to go to dinner or forget about it. We will still capture whatever information they have had the time and ability to put in. So nothing will get lost.
I kind of like how broad and open that one is. I mean, you just have no idea what you're going to get at this point. I have no idea what we're going to see. It'll be interesting.
So I'm hearing you're okay with this question, and I put it here just to kind of keep it with that. When people are thinking about what they like about the town or why they lived there, it kind of gives them that... Where do you want to see it go?
No, this is one, this is one I can see a few people spending that hour you were talking about on.
They might. I'm always impressed at the amount of time and thought people put into taking these surveys. And they're often the people that don't come to... They don't come to the public meetings, but they'll take the time to fill it out for a survey because they know that the planning board or the steering committee is going to get the results. They're going to see it. And they've only taken that hour, and they're not taking the two hours to come sit in a meeting, so. All right. Moving on is the town should pursue more of the following. Now, I will say with some of these, the town has very little control over what kind of applications you're going to get, what kind of businesses are going to come into town. You have some control. So people may want you to pursue more fast food restaurants. You know, whether they're going to come because you're in the right market, there's only, even if you allow them, it doesn't mean you're going to get more of them. But it gives you an idea of do you need to modify some of the uses that you are allowing? Should you be doing more things like protecting open space? You know, investing as the town in more recreational facilities? So it gives you a flavor of what people would like to see more of.
Okay, good.
The couple of things I did add in here, we already had single-family housing, elderly housing apartments, manufactured homes. There was already some of that housing stuff, housing type, in this question. I did add two other things. One is diverse housing options. That kind of gets to that affordability question. But also adding affordable housing in there because that can mean different things to different people. These certainly do not have to be in there, but these are some of the words that a lot of communities are talking about, especially at the local, state, and actually federal level of housing in the area. So it's really up to you guys if you want me to keep it in. We do have all of the other types of housing that are either allowed in Newton or you already have listed out here. But they seem like terms you may want to consider including.
Jen, question?
Yep.
Is that the housing that was coming up earlier, forced housing? Is that one of those?
So workforce housing is typically synonymous with affordable housing. The reason I did not use that term is workforce housing can sometimes be taken as low-income housing, and that constitutes a lot of negative things with a lot of people. If you talk about affordable housing, that can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. And it's a more generic term, but it's meaning that you've got housing for folks that are, you know, your retail industry all the way to your teachers, to your firefighters, to your doctors, to your retirees. So it's meant to be a range.
All right, thank you.
I have a question on, sorry, Dennis Moran.
Yep.
The inclusion of the public transportation, bus, rail, et cetera. I, this is my personal opinion. I don't see that remotely possibly coming into Newton in the next 10 years.
You are probably right. But there are different types of public transportation. One of them could be, you know, a one-time bus that comes into part of Newton that then travels to Lowell. It doesn't have to be a larger-scale public transportation. It could just be a small version.
Okay.
I mean, I could, I could put in a different example if that might be helpful. I would encourage you to keep it in. But putting in a different example in might make that more understandable to people.
That was my only comment. Thank you.
Okay. Other thoughts? Are you okay with these additions? I mean, I can modify that public transportation to be like a commuter bus so that people see that as an option.
Just to reemphasize, we can't make any decisions tonight. We're just giving input and kind of helping to prepare this so that the planning board can, you know, then have a public hearing on it. So, yeah. Or I don't know if we, I don't know that we have to have a public hearing on it. I think we can just do it.
Correct. You do not, as the planning board does not need to have a public hearing.
Okay.
They can simply approve that, yes, this can go out with a vote.
Okay, good.
Okay. Again, allows for a comment. This next question, and I do have to tell you, I will have to make a few modifications to it. But this gets into the question of where, what are areas of Newton do you think are best for residential, commercial, or industrial uses? Please indicate the locations and describe what type of uses you think should go there. So I've actually already gone into this. I took the survey earlier this afternoon and put in... People can put in points of where they think something should go and put a comment. And they can post it. They can also add pictures. You can draw a line, sort of like this triangle. When, when the map is live, and this is an edit I need to make, the outline of Newton will just be the outline. You will actually be able to see the town with this same topography around it. That's just a mistake on my part when I uploaded the map. But having these geo-referenced comments are really interesting when you then take into the question that we ask at the end of, what part of Newton do you live in? So if you're getting comments from people that live over by Country Pond about they think that only industrial uses should be down on Puzzle Lane, then you might start looking at what comments did they put in to indicate that? If someone in Sergeant Woods is saying, "I think there should be no industrial on Puzzle Lane," well, that might tell you something else. So you can start to sort of correlate what people are saying versus where they live and then where they thought certain uses should be. So it kind of gives another level to the comments they may be, may be putting in.
Okay. Will, on Tuesday, will this, will this map be fully interactive? Will you be able to demonstrate that?
Yep, and it's a really easy fix. I just don't...
That would be great.
...have the software to do it.
That would be great, yep.
Yep. So moving on is how satisfied are you with each aspect of the town? This gets into things that are a little bit... Some of it are beyond the purview of the planning board. This is a broad community survey. There are some things in here that are beyond the planning board, like police response to crime. That, the planning board has no say over that. But since you're asking, and they're all somewhat interrelated, it's good to get a little bit of input. little bit of input that different departments within town can actually utilize. But it does deal with everything from housing affordability to road maintenance, traffic, how aesthetically pleasing the town looks, crime, noise, litter. It covers some very broad quality of life things like citizens often will have an opinion about. We can certainly add more or take away. These just tend to get a lot of the input from folks. And they can also always add a comment.
I mean, it seems to me that it's entirely appropriate to have broader than what planning board can actually implement in this. I see this as, as a planning instrument for the whole town. It isn't just to do zoning ordinances. For instance, the implementation factor has to do with, you know, CIPs and things like that for different departments and stuff.
Yep.
So I think it's appropriate to have this much more broad than just planning board.
I mean, ultimately, your master plan is the strategic plan for your community for the next 20 years.
Right.
Okay. Moving on, and actually, this is a more of an aesthetic of the survey. Annie was great in sending me a whole bunch of photos that some citizens have provided. Right now, the only photos are really at the banner or the top of the survey, simply because it ends up getting crowded. I did put in this map the RPC created with your latest tax map parcels. We can keep it in there, but just to sort of show how having pictures in here kind of crowds the survey and makes it longer. I was actually wanting to get some thoughts on if folks do want to have some photos just to sort of jazz it up, or if you'd rather have it be pretty clean and sort of quicker looking to take.
Hey, this is Mark. I'm an advocate of keeping it clean. I think that the photos will be really nice in the actual master plan, but I don't know if people need to be seeing them as they're taking this. I think it's better that, especially if people are looking at it on a mobile format. I could see the photos potentially creating an issue there. So just having the content itself might be the best protocol.
I would definitely agree with Mark. If they're on the mobile version, I would not include them. If they're on the, like, computer-based internet browser version, so be it, but definitely not on a mobile device.
Yeah, I will say this translates really nicely onto mobile, but once you start adding the pictures in, then it gets really, really long potentially. So I can remove this one photo and the window that this question will go in will expand to the same size as the rest.
Jennifer, I did have a question about that, so I'm glad that you brought that up because when I was looking at it on my phone, it did do each of these individually as their own question, and the scroll ended up being so, so, so long on the phone. Is there a way to format it differently so that it doesn't seem so long?
The only real way to do it so it doesn't seem, I know, it says like Town Administrator, Satisfied, like you, you have all of those choices. The only way to, to make that not seem so long on a mobile device is actually to break this up into a couple of questions. So it would be like, how satisfied are you with the quality of the town services in the town hall? And you would have Town Administrator, Building Inspector, zoning. And then you'd have to ask the same question again. Doesn't really save that much room.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense. Um, okay. Can we put a disclosure at the top saying, "We would recommend that you take this on a desktop?" Just so...
Yeah, I can certainly put that in.
Okay. Because that's what I would encourage people to do, because otherwise, like, when I was trying to do it on my phone, I wanted to call it quits after 15 questions.
Or instead of we'd...
That's why we ask the most important ones first, but I'm sorry.
Or instead of we'd recommend, you may want to consider the ease of using it on a desktop or laptop instead of on your phone, something like that. You know, that's good.
All right, go ahead. So I will say, back to this question itself, this is the one question where what is listed here from Town Administrator down to the schools? These do not randomize, simply because you have things like the school that are together, and it makes sense to keep those together.
Okay.
And the other thing is that this is one of the only questions that does not have a comment associated with it. I've had towns be concerned that because this could deal with personnel issues, like, not to throw Nancy on the spotlight here, but if someone really didn't like Nancy as your Town Administrator, you might not want them having the ability to comment publicly about that specifically.
I think that's...
I can turn comments onto this, but they won't be shown if you would like. But it seemed like this gauged enough without having to get into comments.
If you had comment on there, I would make that objection to it. I would agree with that.
I think, I think we'll end up getting the gist of it just by, like, how you have it there. Like you said, there's no comments needed. With whatever gets filled out, we'll explain itself.
Okay.
If I may, does, you need to add Memorial School to the list?
All right, that's an easy one to add. I apologize for editing in real time, but it just makes it a little bit easier for me to keep track of.
It's okay, Jennifer. Do you scroll up just a hair, just so I can see the wording of the question again?
Yep.
Got it, thank you. Is this also an opportunity to ask about, like, so town services, but, I mean, this is, this is essentially town departments or, or bodies, right? I mean, is this an opportunity to expand on that and ask people about, like, their opinion on conservation or the selectmen or et cetera? Or do we want to just keep it to this? It's just an idea.
I think you get to, it's not specifically like the Conservation Commission itself. You do get to the things that you would like folks to be pursuing more of that those boards deal with. So like Conservation Commission dealing more with, you know, protecting more open spaces and Conservation Board. So that may give some charge to Conservation Commission. Or the Select Board dealing more with how they're dealing with road maintenance. Really, when you're going to get into what do people think and want to see the actions, that really should be more within the master plan drafting itself. And I will say, this should not be the only time you get feedback from residents. This is just your sort of big shots that you're trying to get captured and put from. It shouldn't be your only one.
Thank you.
This doesn't capture anyone who's not computer-centric.
But yet you do have Recreation and Highway on there, so why not Conservation? I, I'm not clear about it. And how about the Library?
The Library is on here.
Okay.
I mean, we can add the, some of the commissions if you would like. This was just mainly meant to be more as the departments and the programs that you have.
Right. I guess the only one I'm seeing missing is Conservation, is my point. Isn't Recreation on there? It's not a department, it's a commission.
The Recreation Department, oh.
But it should be Commission.
Okay. I mean, I'm happy to, I'm happy to add in the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board and ZBA and...
It just seems to be...
...if you would like.
It just seems Conservation is the only one that's really missing.
And Jennifer, we need to fix the spelling of department under Recreation Department.
Well, I'm going to delete Department anyway, so.
Perfect, there we go, that's all.
Is it Conservation Commission? What is Conservation called?
Yeah, it's the Conservation Commission.
Commission, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, you're not seeing it on the version of the survey that's being projected, but I did just update that.
Here you go.
So...
I have another question. Out of curiosity, why are we singling out Hazardous Waste Day and, or Hazardous Waste Collection Day versus the Transfer Station in general?
We can certainly add the Transfer Station in if you would like.
Or...
Or just put that instead of Hazardous Waste Day. That's one day as opposed to a whole department.
Yeah, I agree with that. It seems out of place.
Going with the theme of keeping it kind of big picture?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Yeah, and I wouldn't include both just because it's increasing the length of the survey for limited additional data.
So that just got changed to Transfer Station. I apologize if that isn't actually...
You're doing fine, Jen, thank you.
All right, are folks okay to move on? I do know this is not the end-all-be-all of comments, so if you go, have a chance to go through and take it and you see other things that you have questions, it would be easiest for me, in fact, if they could all be sent maybe to Annie and then she can relay them to me, or that I have sort of one list I'm working from. And then if there are discrepancies, then, you know, we can talk about that with the planning board as a whole group or this committee at your next meeting.
Jennifer, I sent some comments to Annie earlier this week before I saw this draft.
Okay.
Annie, I don't know if you've already sent those to Jennifer. If not, I can...
I have, I have a copy, I have them here, Mark, with me, and I've been commenting on them as we go through.
You're the best.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry for being late.
I didn't attribute them to you because I figured you would want to own them if you wanted to, but a lot of them, a lot of them are getting very specific, and one of the things in it is, is the comment section gives a chance for the amplification, but there are, you know, there are definitely some that we've kind of modified according to that or made sure we're covered. So we'll keep doing that.
Great.
I will forward it to Jen also.
Okay, appreciated.
Yep.
All right, so moving down, the following is really dealing with, please indicate your opinion of each of the following facilities, services, or regulations related to planning, zoning, and building in Newton. Now, I will say, it does say building, but we do have things like sidewalks, which can be a zoning regulation, certainly, and a requirement. They can also come about through the Select Board or other folks working with Department of Transportation to put in sidewalks on Route 108. So some of these are definitely planning board or zoning-related. Some of them could sort of blur boundaries with who would be in charge of implementing such a thing.
I mean, schools are to, because we're a district and we share, we, it's a cooperative district. Newton has really no control over the schools. Newton voters and Kingston voters together, you know, determine on the schools. So I don't know if schools belong in our Vision Survey on this aspect or not. I mean, that's something for the board to discuss when we meet on Tuesday.
I'm sorry, Annie, are you back up on the, how satisfied are you with the quality of schools?
I think, I think that's a whole different thing than this next one, the opinion of the facilities and so forth, services and stuff, but...
Okay, um, school does not appear in this question.
Okay, I thought that's what the first one says. I'm having a hard time seeing it.
No, the first one says sidewalks.
Oh, sidewalks?
Yes, sidewalks.
Okay. Sorry, your relevant comment.
She made out the S and didn't read the rest of the word.
No problem. So basically through here are things, sidewalks, telecommunications, protecting water. So are they needed, not needed, might be needed, no opinion? You know, preserving stone walls, preserving open space, preserving mature trees along roadways. This kind of gets Annie to your comment earlier about what should you preserve or promote more of?
Yep.
This is sort of a little redundant to that, but some redundancy in the survey is good because you're validating results.
Okay.
Going through, dealing with, should you be preserving historic buildings? The, the rest of these really deal with how do you understand how building and zoning functions within Newton? So should there be an increased ease of getting a building permit? Now, some of that Newton can have some control over, some of it you can't because it's in state law, and you simply can't amend that. But there are some things potentially by hours the building department is open, or, you know, making sure that all of the permits are online. So there are some functional things you certainly could consider doing. I'm not saying you're not doing some of those things. But it just kind of gauges what people are thinking. Ease of understanding zoning regulations and requirements. There are some things the town can do. There are other things simply because of how zoning regulations are written and the nature of the beast. There's not a lot the town can do with the right, how the regulation is written, but maybe there's some simplification of applications or showing the process by which you go through the planning and building departments with a flow chart. So there are outreach things that can come through this that you may get some gauge from how well people are understanding things.
Okay.
There's also things like the hours of availability that come in for the building inspector or for planning and zoning staff, because you do have part-time folks, maybe that in itself is a hindrance. Helps you kind of gauge. And again, people can provide comments on this topic or on this question.
I was going to say, without the specificity from the people, it's going to be really hard to know how to solve the problem if they say definitely needed.
Well, that, that's why they're allowed to elaborate.
Yeah.
Because I, I get, I bet you from 10% of the people that take it, they will have thoughts. Good or bad, they will have thoughts.
Yeah, okay.
The people that have had a bad experience will have thoughts, and people that have had a good experience will have thoughts. And a lot of people have never needed to come in to get, do a site plan or subdivision application, they may have had to come and get a small building permit. Many people will have no opinion.
So the preserving and protecting lines, those feel very specific. Like, they're like specific issues, so, I mean, do we want to add more here? I'm, I'm curious what other people think in terms of whether we're measuring sort of the right things here and whether we need to be adding more. Because Annie, I sent you some thoughts as to other things that we could add, but again, I think what we want to avoid too is this becoming an exhaustive survey that takes people a long time.
Yeah, and, and I was thinking, Mark, that, you know, for someone who has those particular concerns, you're going to elaborate with a lot of comments, and then it's going to come back in the survey. And without, and keeping it on a very open and broad thing, what other things are other people going to have to say without guiding them to think certain things? You know, the idea is to keep it as open as possible. I don't know. I mean, we'll discuss it on Tuesday, but did you have anything specific? I know you had a whole bunch of ideas.
Yeah, and I was trying to figure out where to plant them. Uh, no pun intended with the... Uh, no pun intended with the, the trees. So, yeah, I mean, I was thinking about like, so we're talking about a lot of different things here, you know, I've, I've been thinking more about like, how do we incorporate more questions around like bringing in more local businesses? Like, one of the, my other ones was, should we increase public access for boating, fishing, and swimming? More town acquisition of open land, improved trail network, like things like that. I'm trying to figure out where we could slot that type of thing in and.
So can I give, can I give us an idea? We will have an implementation chapter. This is to get where people's priorities are. If that ends up being a big priority for a whole lot of people in Newton to have land acquisition, then that's probably gonna go into our implementation chapter in some way. You know, so, you know, I mean, it's really, this is, I would say this isn't the place for, to dig into that in detail, but if we get that kind of detail from people, and there's a lot of them, then we need to address it in both the Vision Plan and in our Implementation Plan.
Thank you.
I will say, Mark, a lot of, what you just brought up as far as topics usually gets shaken out in what would be like a Recreation Chapter or a Natural Resource Chapter, or an Open Space Preservation Plan, which can be part of a Master Plan. So that often does bubble up, and it probably, Annie's right, that it will come up through comments as well. But that doesn't mean we can't, we can't add some things if the Board wants to, so.
And we also don't want to keep, like, lengthening this because if it starts to get too long, like you talked about, Jen, people are gonna get halfway through it, they'll become discouraged and they're not gonna want to even attempt to try to finish the whole survey.
Yep. Alright, I'm gonna keep going if that's alright with folks. I don't want to take up your entire agenda. So, the next question, this is a question that has been asked in a couple of the surveys I've done that's effectively the tax question, even though that's not really the Planning Board's direct charge. Taxes are always a big deal in every town. But it's more of a willingness to pay, so how, it basically is asking, how much do you agree with statements of you would like to have improved town services even if that would result in more taxes? You would like improved town services, but you're not willing to see increases in taxes? You'd be okay with it going either way? You would not be okay with services decreasing even if taxes remain the same? Or you're not gonna accept a decrease in town services even with lower taxes? It's sort of an aroundabout way to get at it, but it can tell you a lot when people say, oh, we want all of these things, but we're completely unwilling to pay for it, or the opposite. So it helps you to gauge sort of what actions the town may take to get to some of its implementation strategies and things people want.
Can, I recommend on the second to last bullet, change the word "decrease" to "reduction" in town services. Sorry for the child in the background.
That's okay. Um, I think if we do that, if I'm changing "reduction," but I would do it in all three of these bullets, the last three bullets.
I just think it personally reads a little bit better or easier for the public to comprehend.
Sure.
That's a good point.
But I, but you're alright if I do it in all three bullets?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I will say, the randomization thing I spoke about, these also do not randomize.
Okay, that makes sense.
Any other thoughts on this one? Or any interest in not having it?
I think it's important to have the, you know, the people need to give their input, you know, on, on that. Do they want more? Are they willing to pay for it? Or do they want less and they want lower taxes? Or do they want, they want some miracle of having everything we've got plus more and not pay for it? I mean, you know, what is, what is, what's the goal? What's the vision?
Alright, moving on from that one, the next couple are really just demographic questions.
Um, why is it say, "I do not live in Fremont?"
Ah, that's sort of a trick one. So this is going to ideally go out to people that live in Newton because your master plan should be based on what the residents want. And, and I do mean residents, not just you own property in Newton, but you don't live here. This should be based on the residents, not just the property owners.
But the, the fifth one there is, I, it's, that was taken from the Fremont survey?
Oh, I'm sorry, Fremont, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm saying.
Never mind.
Hello.
We stole.
But it is, it is still a trick.
We stole heavily from Fremont's survey.
That's, I will say, the demographic ones I just sort of stole.
Let's get that out of there so there's no plagiarism.
Alright.
Well, that one was also developed by RPC.
Just a minute, it'll be all set. But in all reality, it is a, it is sort of a trick question in there because you want the res, you want the people taking the survey to be Newton residents.
Yep.
So if someone take, takes the whole survey and gets down and says, "I do not live in Newton," that's when, once the results are in, we'll be able to see that in a spreadsheet. We can correlate everybody's answers to everything. If someone answered, "I do not live in Newton," then the Planning Board or the Steering Committee is gonna have to make a decision. Do you want to, from your results, pull those answers out? You might still report them, but do you want to pull the results back from someone who says, "I do not live in Newton"?
I got, I, I do have one thing though, that from, that Mark sent in was, you know, about business owners who might not live in Newton but have a business here. And so maybe we should have, "I own a business in Newton." "I do not live in Newton" would be, you know, not necessarily, I don't know. "I do not live in Newton, but I own a business here" as another option.
Well, I, I think, I think it would cover both the business owners just answering that question along with anybody who does own a house in Newton who's just renting it out, you know what I mean? Because there are people who own property that just rent it out and don't live in Newton.
True.
So that way there, instead of having to start, again, putting multiple things in, just leave it as is. And then we could just decide if we wanted to leave it in and, or whatever, but I think it, it does lead to the response of the people that do, do own property in the town. I think their voices should be heard.
I think they should state that they own property in Newton.
Yes, that's, that's the thing. "I own property, I own property but do not live in Newton," or "I do not live in Newton" is a, is a third option.
So I will say there, right now, you can only pick one of these. I can set it up so it says, "I own a business and property, I own," I'm sorry, "I own a business in Newton, I own property in Newton, and I've lived in Newton for six to 10 years." So if someone happens to fall into all of those categories or two of them, they can select all that apply. I can change it to be sort of that kind of question.
I like that better.
Yeah.
It still would allow you to do that filtering of who are residents and who are not, so that you're able to capture that because this is really a residence document, but obviously it does apply to people who own.
But it would, it would be nice to be able to sort out people who totally don't live here, don't own anything here, whatever. They're just kind of answering it because it's out there, because they like answering questions. Versus people who are, actually have investment in the town, either living here or owning property here.
Okay, I can modify that question so we kind of capture those nuances.
Great.
We do have an age demog, just so you get some idea of who is taking it. I will say, if anybody provides comments and they enter that they are under age 18, we can have it so that those are not public because you don't have their consent, or you can't get their parental consent. Generally, I think I've only ever gotten one person under the age of 18 who's bothered to take a master plan survey, so.
We have some very involved children in this town.
An employment situation question, just because it can give you an idea of, you know, what percentage of people that took the survey are the retirees who have a large number of retirement communities in Newton, so it can give you an idea which way some of the demographics are going, along with some of the age.
Why is "other" there?
Because sometimes people don't fit into those nice, nice neat boxes.
Could you give me an example?
You could be a philanthropist and not actually be full-time, be a full-time employee, but you're not unemployed. You're purposely not working. A stay-at-home mom would fit into that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Can we just fix the spelling of unemployed? Uh, there's an extra E.
Yeah, yes, we can.
Actually, there were a couple of them in there that I saw that were some, some misspellings.
All of the employees are actually misspelled. You're right, there's two extra Es. There's an extra U.
You're right.
And the response was, you know, PS on one of them. I figure, I figured those are gonna be, those are gonna be cleaned up, right?
Yeah, I'll go through and do one more search. I'll admit, sometimes I don't catch everything.
Good eyes, Mark.
I may have stared at the survey for a little too long.
You know, I have a question about this, though. Has any, have any towns ever, I mean, so this is one way to look at demographics. Do we ever measure income? So do we do like income ranges where we'll do, you know, I don't know, 25 to 50, 50 to 75, 75 to 120, like just sort of to understand households?
We can certainly put in an income level question if you would like. I try to keep demographic questions as small as possible or as limited as possible, just because people start to not want to answer them.
I think that just gets closer to what I think we're trying to identify here, which is how people are doing questions based off of their economic situation, right?
I mean, we can put in an economic range if you'd like.
That's a decision.
Leave it up to you guys, whatever you guys want to do as a group.
So let me just throw out one more time, you know, it'd be good to give that as an option and then Planning Board can decide on Tuesday.
Sure, I mean, that's an easy one, so.
I think that's a good point though, Mark, what you made, because then it gives us a true demographic of the people that are living in the town and where we are with the financial status of everybody.
Well, we'll we'll be doing that once the census data is out anyway.
Alright, moving on to this last question. This is, please indicate where, what area of Newton you live. People often don't want to give their address, but they will give you the neighborhood they live in. This right now happens to be honing in on Exeter because that's where I live. It will hone in on whatever your computer IP address is, so for people that are taking it at home, it's, it will hone in there. It's a Google map. You can move this little cursor around when you're ready to put in your response. And we can extract that data with any other comments to see where people live compared to some of the other geospatial answers they may get with some of the maps above. And then our last sort of big broad question, is there anything else you would like to tell us about things you would like to see stay the same, improve, or change in Newton? Broad-based question, we'll probably get some really interesting answers. If someone made it this far on the survey, they have something to say, so they will probably say it.
So I think after the question, Mark, Jen, you should put, "Please be nice."
Well, I looked at, I looked at the one that was done in Bedford and I could not believe some of the responses. There were some really interesting ones, so I'm excited for what people say.
I'll admit, as, as the survey will go along, I will, you know, every couple of days kind of take a look, and I, I'll skim through the comments just because they're so interesting to see the insights you get. I think I know Newton pretty well. You guys know it better because you live there. You get some really interesting insights as to what people really think about what's going on, for, for better or worse, so. And then the very last thing on here is that if you would like to receive follow-up information, give us your name and email address.
Good.
And it does say that, um, names and contact information will not be published, just so people are aware of that. And then someone can hit submit and they are off to the races. I will say, if someone only gets, you know, a couple of questions into here and they never hit submit, we will still get that data. They are not required to hit submit.
Jen, there was a question that came in on chat asking if there is a limit of one per IP address? One response per IP address with this questionnaire, this survey?
So I can put that limit on if you would like. The one reason to not do, well, there are a couple of reasons, but one of the reasons not to do that is you may have more than one person in a household, possibly using the same computer or multiple devices from the same IP address that may want to take this survey. When the results of this are, or, I'm not sure if your library is open at this time. You may have multiple people taking the survey from the library as well. That's another place that sometimes you get multiple results. One thing that we can do to, and this is from someone going in and taking the survey 20 times to try to rig the survey. There's a very low chance of it because of just the nature of it. But I can tell when the results are done. It gets spit out in a really big Excel table, and it will list the IP addresses. And we can tell by, if someone has, has a duplicate IP address, and it's something I will check. If it appears more than once or twice, I'll take a look at the other answers they have provided. And if for some reason someone has the same IP address 10 times and they have answered the same questions the same way 10 times, that's when I'll raise a red flag and we'll talk about it as a group as to what you would like to do with those results, but that raises that someone tried to rig the survey. There is a very, there is a very low chance of that, and, but because there's that additional check, I would not limit the number of people who can take this, or the number of times you can take it from a certain IP address.
Okay. This is great. Thank you so much, Jen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work, Jen.
So we'll see, we'll see you on Tuesday with the, you know, the updates and the spelling corrections and all that stuff, right?
Yes, so if there are any additional thoughts that people have, it's easier for me to fix it not in the middle of the meeting. I'm happy to do that, and I apologize that I didn't see any of the chat things that are coming in. But let me know, and if there are other questions between now and then, you know.
Okay, anything, anything anybody has, just send it on to me and I'll, I'll forward it, put it together and forward it to Jen and get it back to you. Okay.
Annie, if I could, I see just one thing you have further down on your agenda that I might be able to speak to that might be helpful for you.
Go ahead with it. What is it?
And that's your 2020 census data. So my office is, helps to execute some of the census data analysis. We have been told we are likely not going to get it until at least the second half of 2021.
Do you know what? I learned that, that it's not gonna be really till probably fall of 2022, yeah.
Yeah, and it probably won't largely be able to be analyzed until closer to 2022, so just sort of keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Then, unless you need me for anything else, I'm gonna sign off and say good evening.
We'll let you go.
Alright, have a good one. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Jen. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay. So, our agenda, what's next? Jim? There we go. Okay. Okay, the scheduling, I sent out to everybody the kind of a spreadsheet of some possible schedules and so forth. And since then, since I sent it out, I did get that information that the census data wasn't gonna be available probably until early 2022. So if Jim would pull up the one that I sent you this afternoon, can you?
That should be on your screen.
No, we, what we have on the screen right now is the agenda. Oh, is there a way to make it bigger so we can see it here? It's really hard to read.
Actually, no, that's at 100%.
Bottom.
How about 150?
Bottom right, Jim.
Wait, we might be getting an adjustment.
Get him. Trying to get somebody else.
Oh, that's good. Yes, good, good. Thank you. We needed that for that vision survey. That's very helpful. So is this, this is the page two part, right, Jim?
That is exactly.
I think it's page two, which is good, because that's perfect.
Okay.
So based on when information, okay, there's page one.
Yeah.
Can we get it bigger again? It just got small again.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay. It's good, Jim. We're good. Okay. 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 Is this the first page or the second, Jim?
Page one, sheet one.
Sheet one, okay. So basically what we talked about is, what Jen had presented a long time ago, I think in the spring, about a master plan, was that the three most important chapters for us to concentrate on initially are the vision chapter, which we're working on with this survey, and then doing the vision chapter and planning to, aiming to be done with a completed vision chapter by June. Then the next chapter would be the land use chapter.
Is that June of '22 or June of '21?
Honestly, I wish I had my own.
It says June 2022.
This is, I know.
For the census.
This does not look like.
Not for the vision, it also says June 2022.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
June 2021 is when our plan is to, see, write up all for the May 2021 draft, June adoption update coming to the Board of Selectmen on various things. So the difficulty here, Jim, is that we're not seeing the whole, because it's enlarged, we're not seeing the whole thing.
Sorry, it's split into two sheets.
I don't know why. Can you try a horizontal view instead of the vertical view?
There you go.
I think it's the layout, under-page layout.
Yeah, I'm looking at a.
If you click the normal button, Jim, to your left.
Ah.
Okay. Okay, Jim, you're scrolled way over, way over on it, to the right. Can we go to the left so we can see the edge of it? It's difficult because we're not seeing the whole, all we're seeing is lines right now.
So Annie, on the computers, it looks okay, which is kind of funny.
All right.
Yeah, I don't know what it's, how it's appearing on the screen out there.
Yeah.
Very small.
Okay, scroll it over to the left, please. You're okay size-wise, just scroll it over to the left.
Scroll it.
Jim, maybe if you shrink the window and then just move it over to the right-hand side of your computer, so that the Excel window.
Here, okay, okay.
That's good.
Hold it, hold it.
Perfect.
Okay. So this is something that I sent out to all of you, but there's a little bit of updates with it. So let me just give you a big picture, and I'll send out this particular thing so that you can look at it. Big picture is, this year, by June, we can finish doing the vision survey, and we can finish updating the town departments, which is not part of the priorities that were given by RPC when Jen did her presentation. But we are unable to attack the land use chapter in any kind of good way until the census data is available, which would be early 2022. So my suggestion is that we tackle the vision chapter and we go on with what we've already begun, with asking the departments to do their updates and get that ready. So that is all done by June, by this June. Then we take off for the summer, and then in the fall, we get together and see if there's anything else that needs to be done. But then next year, begin the land use. And part of what the planning board is going to need to look at is, do we want to see about hiring RPC to help us with the land use, or do we want to tackle it on our own? I think that we could also take on in the fall doing the school system updates, writing about the buildings and some of the changes that have gone on there for the survey. So I think there's some things that we can handle during 2021. There are some things that would be coming in 2022. And then what we need to do is look at a plan going forward to suggest. And my suggestion is over, do a rolling updates over the next few years with a plan to do a new vision survey and update in five years and in 10 years. So do the 10 years for the land use when the census data comes out every 10 years, but do the vision survey and updates and implementation plans every five years. And that's something for everybody to kind of think about. It isn't something to make a decision on tonight, but I just wanted to kind of put it out there about when information is available and what we can reasonably do in certain periods of time. So we can talk about that later. It isn't something we have to decide on, or can, because we don't really have quorum capability tonight to decide anything. The other thing is that when we're getting these updates from the different departments, what I would really love is for different ones of us to choose a department to be responsible to make sure that they get their stuff in by April 15th. And I'm wondering who would volunteer for what? For instance, we have municipal departments like Town Hall. I'm hearing crickets. We need someone who would coordinate with Town Hall to get an update on the building and on, you know, just what's there, plans on capital improvements that might be needed, things like that. What facilities are there? Okay.
Well, it only makes sense to have somebody held accountable to be able to make sure that it gets done.
And basically, it's going to be Nancy who's going to be accountable for it with the Board of Selectmen. Perhaps, here's a suggestion. Perhaps we ask the person who is the planning board liaison to be the person to make sure that they get the Town Hall information.
Yeah.
Police, fire, I would think that would be the chief in each case. And I hope there's at least somebody on the board or on this steering committee who would be willing to interface with the police or fire to make sure we get that information in. Larry, is that something you could do?
Hey, Annie, it's Evan.
Evan. You'll do it. All right.
Annie, well, I'm the liaison to the police department, so I can do it.
Okay, all right. Okay, is that for police and fire or just police?
I'm just the liaison for police. Charlie's the liaison for fire.
Okay, so we'll see if maybe Charlie will do that. We have Pat here who is going to make sure that recreation does. And cable, okay. I know Anne from the library has already told me that she is the person for the library, and she seems to be very on top of things. Mike Pevero has told me for the Highway Department that he has all his information ready. He's got a five- and 10-year plan for capital improvements. He's got all the information on what's been done. He can do that relatively easily. I'll be happy to coordinate with him. He said he'd be happy to help. Is there, does anybody want to take on doing the school? Kind of a write-up on what's going on with the school? I'm kind of familiar with it if anybody wants me to do it.
I think you should do it. I was just going to say that.
So is there anything else that we need? And thank you, Evan, for stepping up on that, and I hope Charlie will. I'm sure he will. Okay, and I think as long as we make sure that we get that information in by April 15th, we're going to be able to put those write-ups together and present those to the planning board for, you know, public hearing and so forth in a timely way, so we'll be able to deal with our goals for the year. Does anybody have anything else? Anything?
There was just one thing that there was talk of the, actually, the Selectmen and the planning board getting together to see where everybody was, to get on the same page. That might be a good opportunity to ask them about getting the liaison to make sure the information gets.
Yeah. Evan, who's the liaison to the planning board? Is it Larry still?
Yep, the ex-officio is Larry, yep.
Oh, good, okay. So we'll discuss all that on Tuesday about the possibility of a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to include the fire chief in that, because there were some comments made that were disturbing in the last meeting that we need to kind of clear the air about. So that's something we'll be talking about on Tuesday. Does anybody have anything else? There being nothing. I'm going to just adjourn this meeting. I want to thank you all so much for being here and for all the input and all the information. I think we're moving forward with a good sense of getting a vision for our town. So thank you.